Good evening.
Is it a hard service or is it a...
Try again. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor.
Trying to interrupt.
Welcome to the Highland Village City Council Early Work Session. It is July the 9th and it is now 6:02 PM. Our present time. So we're going to get started discussing appointment, you know, vacancy for an unexpired term for one council representative position on Highland Village Community Development 4B.
Miller? So former Mayor Dorsky had served on the Highland Village Community Development Corporation as a council representative. The term that expires this September because of the election that we just recently had. Well, not the election, but he turned out as mayor. So Mr. Dorsky is no longer serving on the Community Development Corporation. So we have a vacancy to fill with an unexpired term. So this is an opportunity for council to discuss building that position.
It needs a council member. And the council members that are currently serving.
Currently serving council members are Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Thirenza, Councilwoman Hearst, and Mayor Pro Tim Kixmiller.
Okay, so who...
Need more representatives?
We need one more. We need one more to fill...
Rock paper scissors, anyone?
Really? Flip coin? Anybody?
I'm serious.
So gentlemen, there's three of you on that side. Now, to say that we are also going to be reappointing.
In September.
When we...
Yeah, this is just for an unexpired term that expires September 30th.
But they meet one time, which is coming up 20 years.
Actually, it will be prior to the next council meeting.
And they do it right before the council meeting. So like it...
It'll be the next...
4:30.
The 23rd, 24:30 in the afternoon.
Yeah, I think that when it is. Yes, Kevin?
I'll volunteer if needed.
Good man.
I'd apply Robert for it or Sean. I wait till nobody else joins and then I'll... Yes.
Can we do it right?
Wait, what?
You'll be here that day? Are you going to be here that day?
23rd.
You're flying in. What time does it start?
4:30.
Or 4:30 somewhere in there.
You will be here?
I'll be here.
Just don't get delayed.
It's Florida.
I land at 3:30.
Are you going to be just like skirting it?
Oh, I'll come flying in.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's... So that's awesome if you want to do that. Nobody else... I had said earlier that I would throw my name in for this one meeting and then we're going to reappoint if nobody... But if you do, I'm good with that.
As a current serving member, I'm glad to know that you're interested, so we'll appoint you then in September.
Yes. I'm hoping that he does such a great job. Any one of those three that were... Such a great job that they would be reappointed.
So there is an opportunity to do, take formal action on this tonight during the session. It's just a discussion item right now.
And that is the only action item.
Yes.
On the agenda tonight. So if we were to move that to consent, then we could do that. No, I'm just saying that's an opportunity.
I think so.
An opportunity. An opportunity. No suggestion. Okay, well, thank you for that discussion. It was lively and wonderful. Number two, receive a presentation and discuss the general fund budget for fiscal year 2024 and 2025. And I have a feeling that all of our people that are here, our residents here, might not, might have shown up for number one, but they're going to have to sit through number two. You're not going to get up and leave yet, so...
We're here.
All right, so Ken?
Can we make sure we add it? It's not on our calendar that gets sent out? Just go, just put in your phones. 4:30.
If you're on 4B.
You'll send out a notice.
You're on top of it.
I'm just looking at the...
I'm sorry?
I'm looking at the recent calendar.
Yeah, the cat wrangling calendar, I like to call it. Cat wrangler keeps us all focused.
Exactly. Okay, all right. Yes, sir. This is our favorite time of the year.
No doubt. Another round of the budget is here. So we'll just jump right into it. We just have a few slides, you know.
I heard 70.
We're starting at 70-ish.
We may just have one slide.
That's right.
Can we put in the budget to get a better clickery thingy? Because that thing never works.
Tom Raider error.
Feels a heart.
Need to point up here?
I... Yes, thank you. At least you don't have the little scrollie thing where you, you know, you write down and you scroll over the next one and it's protected.
So we're going to, we're going to go, jump to number three while they're working on that and do clarification of consent or action items on today's council meeting. Does anybody have any, anything that they need clarification on?
Of the one item you just talked about.
That was pretty clear what we're going to do.
Okay, well, then we're, we're going to have number three to do. We've just done that, so, okay.
Okay, so we're ready to go. So we always start out with the current year projections until we know what we're going to have within the year going forward for next week. So looking just at the picture of things, here's our revenue items, property tax. We're pretty well on target. We're showing a little bit less than that. You know, there's, even though the tax rule is certified, there's still protests that happen during the year. So we always end up a little short or a little over, so it's usually pretty close, and so we're within range.
Is that a projection of our loss from the property tax revenue source?
That's a projection. So we may end up being right there. That's just my best guess.
So you're just waiting on the protest to be finalized and...
And see what revenue comes in. Sales tax, we're actually running good. We'll talk more about sales tax. We're about five, to date, we're about 5% over the last year and we're right at what we budgeted, right on target with that. So that's looking pretty good. Hit the high points. Public safety fees, it shows that we're, that we're below our target. But looking back, we get a, it's comprised of several things. EMS fees, we get a, we have an agreement with the shops and we also have realized the participation with our two SRO officers. We actually got that, but we got it in September and mistakenly recorded it. It's actually recorded in last year or should have been actually for this year. So we have the money. It was just in the previous fund balance, so we're not really short. Interest income, this changed dramatically the last year. We got significantly increased rates on that, and so we're, that's looking pretty good. We're going to enjoy it while it's here. How long that lasts, we don't know. But so that's left us in pretty good shape for, we're going to be likely somewhere in the $300,000 positive range for revenues for this year. So that's good. On the expenditure side, you know, we look into our personnel and that actually affects these three departments. We're a good bit under our budget. A good bit of that, like I say, with salaries, we have some turnover, less than we've had in previous years, but we still have some reduction there. Over time, it's actually, it's offset set a little bit as well as the city contribution. We do our projections based on what we have at this point in time. We enroll every October for employees of what they select as their deductions and so forth. So that, there's always a little bit of a variance there. On the benefits, which is a good bit of what these variances are for police is the insurance. We actually anticipated, I think, a 10% increase last year and then working through all the variations with our insurance provider, it can lessen that. So we basically moved towards the end of the budget process, so we didn't change the budget to reflect that. So ended up with a positive variance.
Excuse me, Ken. Could you go back one slide, please? You said something about personnel, no, forward again, I'm sorry. Where you showed the police, the salaries.
Well, that was all salaries.
Yeah, yeah. So the, you have a projected $242,000 loss, right?
Well, low budget.
Below budget because we had...
Turnover.
Turnover.
Vacancies.
Right. That 242,000... What I'm thinking about, we're going to have to replace those, right? With those, that's allocated money anyway.
Well, it's money we, basically it's money we still have in our, will have, ended up in our fund balance. It'll be available. So it's money we saved, we just didn't have the productivity from those people being here.
That would be reflected in the next year's budget, depending on the salary, depending on the personnel.
We'll budget for full employment for that for next year.
Okay, so that's nothing more than just saying we're below what we anticipated because of turnover.
It's just like if we budget for $100,000 for street maintenance and for whatever reason, we only did 80,000 of that. We would have 20,000, but we would still budget 100 the next year.
Okay.
So, and then Team RS was a little reduced because of her wages being reduced and unemployment. We always budget 10,000 just in case we need that because we kind of self-do that and we have no need of it actually for the last few years. So we have to put it there. So, so on the services, supplies, capital side, just a few things comprise that primarily with maintenance and our parks departments. In maintenance, we have, this reflects our leasing program for all our vehicles. You know, and it's been kind of a challenge of getting up fully to speed since we implemented the program. So basically, we just didn't get as many cars. We get cars and we're starting to get where we need to. I think next year we'll end up with a full fleet of all our leased vehicles, but it's taken a while. And so we didn't get as far as we expected, so they were a little bit less. But it'll be certainly addressed. It'll be up there next year, probably as they get a full implementation. We did budget at 75,000 to replace our generator here. In the process of that, we just, we did a facility study and went through and then when we thought that, it's actually going to turn into a $500,000 expense that you're going to see in next year's budget, along with electrical upgrades, along with that. So there'll be a, but we didn't spend it this year. It's just pushed out the next year and increased. But you'll see that. Building in grounds, this is, this has to do within the maintenance department, the last installment of, I guess, our facilities or upgrade, security upgrades we did that went over the course of a few years. And so we expected all that to be done last year. We just had a little bit of residual carryover for that. And then we purchased a mower in parks or our trail mowing that the existing mower with the grades we have had some safety concerns. And so we opted to buy a new mower that was very suited to it from the safety standpoint. So it unplanted, it added a little extent there. So the bottom line with that is we were half a million dollars under what we had budgeted. So between the two, we are looking at... Fund balance ending 2023 was actually higher than expected because we had a variable outcome for that year. And then carrying over to this year where we expected to be at 37%, we're instead projected to be right about 47%. So provides us a very good starting point for this year. So some of these things will carry over as, as in conferences, but some of them are just things that were just not needed or spent. You know, we budget for contingencies, we budget for like full employment, we budget for the things we expect to do. We always look for ways to save and some things don't make as much as need be. You know, we, we have a culture we've never encouraged and that you'll maybe find in some agencies where we have to spend our budget or we won't get it next year. That's never been the case here. So, so oftentimes you'll see, I expect to see a variable variance every year. But that provides confidence for the departments to know that they don't have to worry about getting what they need for the next year just because they didn't spend it this year. But that's partly reflected. So as we look to next year, just to give you an overview, we project a 35% fund balance. We have some expenditures, big, some big expenditures within that that have come up and so we'll highlight that. But still leaves us in a very solid position. So knowing, going through as we start going through stuff, you know, the end result is, still looks pretty good. So we start seeing some of the dollars, you don't get freaked out before we get there. Looking at our base budget, you know, revenues, just a reminder that, you know, we've got three items to make up roughly 90% of our budget with the property tax, sales tax, and franchise. And, and so looking at those, those are the big drivers for this next year as well as interest. This can actually be even more projections for next year, long as the rates stay up with that. We'll get more in the property tax detail. Sales tax, we are looking at a 6.8% from last year's budget. We're up 5% from last year. So this shows you actually the actuals, I guess, as we've over the last several years. Our projections for, as I said, five, around 5% over the last year. And this would actually be four, between four and 5%, it's what we're thinking for next year. We don't really see anything to tell us any different. So that's been a pretty solid for us. Going and taking a look too, going back five years, a big change in what makeup has been. You can see our primary marketplace shops has actually decreased a little bit, but internet sales has been our big change, sales tax from that.
Speaking of internet sales, I learned that my sales tax, when I pay for a streaming service, has been going to Flaramount. How do we stop that? It's based on our zip code.
Zip code, we don't share with Flaramount on that.
Yes, we've got Louisville.
We do Louisville.
I don't know if we have the back or maybe it's chain Louisville, maybe still copper. I'm just saying that I learned that I was paying Flaramount taxes for my streaming services. And I have spent, I think, eight hours in the past month getting my money back to go to the city. But imagine...
We've...
How do we go about getting our money back?
That's a good question. We have to research that a little bit. Yeah, we had some issues with that. Sometimes, you know, we do audits and review periodically for businesses. They'll list an address and they'll set down correctly and they'll go to the wrong place. So that can be challenged and have that redirected. And you see, actually, the allocation from the controller, there's a category of adjustments where oftentimes when we determine or somebody determines it's been going to the wrong place, they'll react reactively.
Give it back.
Give it back and, and so adjustments go up and down along the way, but...
These are streaming services, big name brand ones.
Just one or...
No, multiple. I was, I, I found one. I'm like, oh, look, and I call, oh my gosh. So yeah, I've had to...
How did you know that? How did you find that?
Because it was on your bill or something? Well, I was looking at my bill because there was a local something pack, I don't know. It's something to do with soccer and my kid loves soccer. And then I got into it and I'm like, whoa, why am I paying for Flaramount stuff? Yeah, broke it down.
I'll tell you, telephone bills and, and the way they list things and all the different fees and it is mad trying to decipher it to start with. And then to get somebody to actually even explain what, what they are and then to change them is a whole another episode.
Well, the sales tax is pretty, I mean, it's not as complicated as Fubo, but the sales tax on Netflix or Hulu or Google or whatever, very straightforward.
Some are better than others.
But what, yeah, what, I guess, who enforces that? Because that's, that's the next question.
Well, the state actually controls the, the, we get everything funneled through the state to us. So, but we, we can certainly look in that initiate, look into it. And so just briefly going through our franchise fees, we're, they've stayed relatively constant. So they'll go up maybe a percent and down a percent. So it's, it's pretty well fairly fixed with that. License, we've had some commercial activity, so we expect that to go up a little bit perhaps. It was more this year than expected budget wise. Public safety fees aren't showing an increase. And this would be mostly related to EMS fees. We've seen, you know, showed you a little history there where not huge increases, but we have updated our rates, you know, along the way a little bit. And so doing pretty well with that. Volumes just has increased, but not dramatically. Interest income, as I mentioned, is going to increase a good bit. So all in all, we're looking at 7% increase overall revenues, which is extremely good. I'd say that's above average for sure. So...
Where did the pilot know Tampa Reynolds?
That's the end of that fund.
Okay, that's the end of the core, okay. So those Reynolds that we showed up here?
Those are our tower for, that we lease for the cell towers. The property tax, as you can see over time, our valuation has fluctuated quite a bit. But in recent years, it's been going in one direction, going up. So that's kind of where it's been. But if you look over time, over 25 years, you know, for existing property, the average increase has been three and a half percent. So over time, that's probably what it's going to revert back to. But you pick any part of the... But you pick any part of that, as you can see, you know, the last last five years is six percent, which is way above what we've normally had, five percent. So this has gone on for a good ten years. We've had a lot of increase, but for the previous five, it averaged zero. So it's so if you, over time, you'll see that even out. We just we're right now in a transition. It's not just us, it's throughout throughout the company. So looking at our property tax, and this is kind of with our projections, you know, there's two major components. You know, we have our new construction, which property added to the tax roll. You know, in years past, we could usually count on forty fifty million a year added to that. It's been a while since we've been at those levels, but we don't really have a lot of new construction going on, but we still have some. And then we have our existing value. And so existing value, we show an increase of that along with new growth. And that basically factors into our overall increase. So you can see for this budget year, six point six three percent. You're expecting supplementary rolls that I show right now are showing about six percent. And I think that's about where it's going to end up. And so along with twenty million is what the new growth we're showing. So that's actually pretty, pretty healthy for us. You know, but the thing with that, though, is we're limited for new growth part of that to basically three and a half percent increase in revenue. So we achieve that, you know, we're still going to have a six percent increase in our valuation because that's based on their effective market valuation. We reduce the tax rate. And that's part of our truth and taxation process to equate that to more of a three and a half percent increase. So that's the way that works. And then looking ahead, you know, I think again, at some point in time, whether it's this year or next year or somewhere in there, it's going to revert back to probably the three to three and a half percent is our expectation. Hard hard to know for sure. We live in times that have not been moving for a while. So looking at the expenditure side of our base budget, personnel serving. You know, the last few years have been extreme challenge. Not just for us, but just across the way for personnel retention. And and we're going to do a lot more detail on that, but we have a pretty sizable increase. In fact, most of our increase is related to proposed personnel increases. We'll go through, Kim's going to kind of plug you to that here in just a second. On our services supplies side, we really don't show much change there. So it's it's relatively flat with that. On our capital, we're showing a big, the increase we show here is related to the generator and electrical upgrades with the facilities study. And we've known for a good while, there's lots of challenges. And we went to that a few years back when we had the trouble with the line kind of exploding and coming into the police department and and work with all that. And we have lots of work to do with our UPS and our network and getting everything wired correctly and with the proper generators. So that's going to be, that's our best guess, but it's going to be a pretty big expenditure for that. So now look at our base budget. You know, I kind of adjust the comparison because rather than just, you know, what's the increase from last year? Some of this last year had some one time expenditures that kind of inflated that. So I look at kind of more the ongoing cost. So I take those out. So that reflects basically just in our base expenditures, seven point four percent. And again, that's related primarily to our personnel, which we will run into. So I'll hand it over to Kim and he's best served to give you the skinny on that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to talk to you about compensation. Everyone get excited.
Compensation.
Compensation. All right, so the first thing I wanted to mention is something that council and others have been interested in is maybe doing a market city study. So we're planning on that fiscal year twenty five. And then I'm going to put in my budget every five years moving forward. And we already have a light item for studies like this, so it was an additional supplemental. So this year we did do a compensation review. Former Mayor Dorsky kind of spearheaded this. And there were some things that he wanted us to look at and that I wanted to look at as well. The goals of this was to assess the feasibility of implementing a step schedule to improve retention, evaluate employees' ability to top out of their range, examine our current compensation structure and the process. And the last one you probably would need some explanation for. Compare our market cities, public safety step two pay with our five year officer and firefighter. So our goal was, we didn't want someone in their one, well, two to five years to jump over to another city and get paid more over there. So we wanted to see where we were competitively with that.
The step schedule, is that across all departments?
We looked at public safety and all other departments as well. So we we looked at everything. So the outcome of this, after reviewing retention rates, market city data, employee turnover, associated costs, and the group did decide to retain our current pay structure. We are making a little bit of a change, though. And we're proposing to reduce public safety pay schedule spread from a forty percent spread to a thirty percent. So this will allow public safety to top out around ten to twelve years, depending on movement movement of those ranges. And this is very consistent with the market, depending on the position. So this this will help quite a bit with staying competitive in that one. Also, we realized that our peace officer, our police officers and firefighters do align well with our step with our market city step twos. So if someone who was in those two to five year range would still be making comparable. Well, we would be, they would still be paying more here than going elsewhere. We had hired a larger compensation group to do some of the study analysis, and that's part of that process. And then we also realized HR needed to collaborate with the departments to really have a good communication campaign, spearheaded with the chiefs and other department heads. I wanted to go over turnover attrition data. So you'll notice I went all the way back to twenty seventeen because the twenty nineteen, twenty one, twenty twos, those years were a little crazy. Fiscal year twenty four, October to June, so that's current. We're doing pretty well, six point two nine. The goal is to be around ten to twelve percent. And we're almost wrapping up fiscal year at six point two nine. So that's doing pretty well. I have it by department as well. So you'll see here on this side where everyone falls. You'll notice that fire did have a little bit more significant turnover. Three of those positions were before December and then two were after December. And then the next side, it'll show you some of the reasons why. So fiscal year twenty twenty three turnover. And then at the bottom there, I'm sorry, you can't see too much, I'll explain.
Go back.
Yes, sir.
Just looking at this last year, we had a, we underspent on police almost a half million dollars due to vacancies. And so I was looking to see where we had the attrits. So we've been twenty twenty two, didn't get them rehired until.
Yes, so we had a quite a bit of a difficulty getting personnel in those departments for a little bit longer than we would.
So they attrited out, so they stayed open for.
For for quite long, much longer than we had hoped. We're doing really good, though, right now. Okay, perfect. Okay, turnover reasons. We have fiscal year twenty three at the top and then twenty four at the bottom. And you'll notice, let's see, right here, three positions in fire. Those went to a different city. They were actually getting the same pay. What was stated was they wanted some promotional growth. Two in fire on this side, other. Other is they either didn't tell us why, it was for personal reasons, medical or just other. And let's see here, we have only one in parks and it was a performance related. Three in communications. This is mostly not meeting the introductory period, which is the first twelve months. Two relocated in police, one retired in public works. So if you notice, this is a lot more people who actually than who actually left in. So the previous chart, these, they they left after their introductory period. This is everybody. So although we do keep track of those individuals who left for in those first six months for general and then public safety. Any questions? A year's service ending in fiscal year twenty twenty three is eight point six month, eight years, six months. This is going to stay consistent through the end of the fiscal year. And then with some projected retirees, this will get a little less. And hopefully not less than that, but a little bit more less.
Not pointing any fingers.
Not pointing any fingers, but this is one of, this is going to be one of our challenges moving forward. So ECI data employment cost index, so four point eight stay in local government nationwide. You'll see on this chart over here, you'll notice it is crazy. For stay in local government, they only do a national chart, they don't do a local. So I also pulled private sector data for the DFW area and it's about three point eight percent. CPI is five percent in the in the DFW area. All right, proposed salaries fiscal year twenty five. Total budget increase is six percent. I want to stress this, this does not mean everyone's getting a six percent increase. This is just the whole budget is going to increase six percent. Pay schedule adjustments, non exempt ranges are within market and are not going, the schedules aren't going to increase. Exempt and public safety, their schedules are going to move up six percent. And this statement here, some positions will move to a different grade or schedule and will not see the six percent adjustment for their position. So what this means is each position is looked at every year based off of our market cities. So when we're looking at that, we're just not moving everyone up six percent. We're looking at the position and adjusting those as as needed. That keeps us fiscally responsible and keeping us with the market as well. And we're looking at retention rates and what other cities are going to maintain those consideration as well. So this will address a cost of living adjustment, market adjustment, compression, reducing that spread to thirty percent for public safety. It'll help us align employees' tenure a little bit more closely with their percentage into range. This is a very expensive to do because the last couple of years we've been moving our ranges as the economy's been quickly increasing. So this will take a little bit of time to do, but this will help us get much closer. And then there's new FLSA guidelines, for example, personnel, which means their minimum needs to be fifty eight, six fifty six. Questions?
I'm going to see the six point two percent, two nine percent turnover in the tax. I'd rather see it a little bit higher. I think we only had one termination for cost. But we don't want to push there arbitrarily and bring people, so good job.
Okay, looking at the breakdown of that, you know, six percent's a lot. And we had seven percent last year. And honestly, we can't keep doing that. And so we don't have a choice right now if we want to retain employees and kind of stay. Public safety is a primary driver of that. They have shortages of people to fill positions in this whole area. And so until that reaches equilibrium, we're going to be somewhat stuck in that. Hopefully, that will settle down, I think, within the next year or two. That's, we're hopeful that I'll get there, but we're not there yet. So the salary increases, if you look at, you know, six percent over, you know, current salaries and then the related benefits cost of that, seven hundred thousand. Changing bases like that between last year and this year, sometimes that's negative based on retirements and some, I might contribute to that next year, probably change that around a little bit. But it's positive this year. Overtime, that's increased a little bit. If you look at the history there, poison fire, obviously, are a primary overtime users. Last year, we budgeted two forty four and two twenty five respectively. And we're a little bit over on both projected for this year. So the budget's a little bit between that, but still increase for, that's kind of reflective of what we're currently doing. So we do have some money going there. And TMRS goes in tandem with our salary. Part of the the six percent built into this number, this is actually your increase in our rate. You can see our history, you know, we're a two to one match, employees contribute seven percent. So we expect that to be in a fourteen percent range. And we were under it for a good while as we have more longevity and more tenure that's gone up. Hopefully, that'll top out pretty close to where it's at, but it'd be true. Insurance, challenging year for us. And I think we're going to actually end up being a little bit better than what we anticipated. We've unfortunately had bad experience three years in a row. So our provider has not made money on us. So we have absolutely no leverage whatsoever going into this year. We cross as our our vendor. And so based on what our initial estimates were, we've got it down to single digits. And so I have ten percent built into the budget right now. I think we're going to be, end up being a little bit less than that. So we'll go back and budget through like that as well. But given where we're at, that's an amazing outcome. Because if we were to go back out to bid, we wouldn't likely get in. And and it's good that we were able to negotiate with our brokers. We've been with a long time, Hick and Bottom are very, very good at that aspect. And so unfortunately, to be happy with a ten percent increase is not really great, but it could be worse. So all in all, that's a big increase. And that's a primary driver for this next year's budget. So with that, again, that was our base budget. We have presented a million dollars in supplemental requests. These are things that are either new programs, new pieces of equipment or or something that we haven't just built into our regular operations. Sometimes we're a little, little bit of both. Sometimes it's a current thing we're doing that we're enhancing a little bit. So what we tried to do to be fully transparent, anything that has a big dollar item and has even marginal, we're going to put on this list to highlight it and put for you as a discretionary thing and 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 do a diligence of providing explanation with that. So we're going to kind of let the departments talk about their own things. So we'll start off with police and chief.
So this is not a new program. It's enhanced, as you know, we created a new ordinance for micro mobility ordinance. I don't have any other slides to back this up. It's just a refresher to tell you that the program jumped off with those tri units. We came to council and asked for those units to help us enforce, help us to be out there and police the the trail systems and whatnot. It's taken off so well with the two that we initially started with and guys and gals fighting over wanting another another one. And because of maintenance costs, we don't always have two of them in operation. But it's a very productive process for us to have two officers, at least two at any given time. So it was a it was a worthy request to ask for another vehicle, similar one that's. So it was a it was a worthy request to ask for another vehicle, similar one that's proven already. And we'll get ten years out of this thing, this is the expected life expectancy for it. So it's my only request this year for budget supplements. Any questions?
I do have a question. You mentioned the maintenance aspect of these, what kind of maintenance issues are we?
Minimal, but I have only have a couple of people who are certified to fix them. So if they go down, they they it would sit until it's fixed. Tires, sure.
Nothing with the structure or anything like that?
No, no, they've been solid that way and they've been dumped a couple of times even also and still still have survived.
So it's just normal.
It's normal wear and stuff, right?
Yeah.
But to take one out of operation, it's just like the cars, I get asked that question too or recently just asked about how many how many cars you have? And I said, we don't have enough cars. We have thirty two officers, okay, and fifteen police cars. If we have any operation, we have six people on the road at any given times for each shift, shift change happens. You don't switch cars, you go to a new car, we split cars for people. And there's there's usually a car that's down once a week for normal maintenance, not to mention anything we didn't even expect. So same thing happens even with our bicycles. Something's usually because of because of our twenty four seven operation has to have maintenance, regular maintenance or unexpected maintenance. And if we're putting them down, we're not providing the service to the citizens at that time. And and if you let things sit for too long that way, the officers themselves lose interest in doing it also. The time they come in, it's not working, it's not fixed, it's not ready to go. It just loses its 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 real impact on the community.
They've proven productive for you?
Absolutely, yes. We're in our we're in our educational enforcement phase right now through the summer. When we roll into the school year will be, in fact, we got a video coming out right now to help that educational phase. We'll roll into a a true, true enforcement phase when the school year starts again. We're tracking all of that, the time on those scooters. Another thing that I did mention, I have another one, I we we sent four of our officers or had four of them trained to be instructors. Before they can instruct anybody in the department, they had to get a hundred hours on these things. And then once we moved to a level of instruction, if I only had two of them, that means one instructor is on, I can only train one officer at any given time. So with a third unit, now we can have one instructor and two officers training at the same time, sort of doubling up, get them out there to 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 help help with those with normal data air operations, but also special events.
Great, thank you.
How's our safety?
Officers on. It's getting better. Oh, for you mean for officers riding each?
Officers riding and I know there's a road rash on a couple early ones.
Yeah, there is. It's a learning curve, so.
So is that settled in and?
Yes, it has, yeah.
No lost hours?
We actually wrote a pretty extensive policy, we thought. And and after, you know, incidents of learning, rewriting a policy, rewriting a policy and and making sure that those things are put in place to be safer. So it's really neat having just the four initially because they learned a lot. I learned a lot. What better what a better mode to step in and be humble to say, you really need to pay attention on these things, so.
When did you get the first two?
Due to budget amendment last year somewhere above midyear, midyear budget adjustment. At that time, those things cost us about thirty two thousand or two with all the batteries are darned because it's crazy. It's electric concept is.
The intent though is to be on the trails mainly during the school?
So our primary users of it, you know, all the show we're at are my SROs. And Harney run them to schools, run through the schools, through the schools with them and then hit the trails also at the same time. During summer month, when the the school's out, their primary role is the shops and the trails. So they're running them out of the shops right now, keeping the kid population or or havoc to a minimum, okay? And then hitting the trails at the same time for enforcement, educational enforcement. Have not written a single citation yet. Warnings, either verbal or written are all what we're doing for this until like we get past the educational phase. And then next month, I think we're going to implement, we're just doing the warnings right now. This next month, we're going to implement the reward service also along with the warning. So I mean, if we find people doing what they're supposed to, they're going to get a reward. We partner with Foryo Joes and some other businesses where we hand out coupons for the kids to get treated for it. So after that, it's it's just pretty 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 strict with enforcement at that.
On the enforcement and the training, have you guys scheduled any classes outside of school for the non?
Nothing for the summer scheduled yet.
Nothing for the, okay, so nothing for the not public school kids, homeschool kids?
Nothing yet, it's been scheduled primarily while we're trying to get through these videos and the and the general, a big the big bang for a buck for the education process. Then we'll, as we move past that school year, we'll get into the specific calendar, you know, scheduling of those things.
Have you busted anybody on four oh seven?
Four?
Riding scooters, like those things, okay, I just wondering.
I don't ride.
I've seen a few, there's been a few zipping on four oh seven.
Doubt it, yes. So and I throw this out there for anybody, you know, we deal with this all the time. Usually it's have, you know, we need complaints, we need people to generate those things, the traffic. When we hear traffic complaints, Scott contests, they run all the data for for and show that our city's in compliance eighty five percent of the time or more on every single street. So if we run that data out on four oh seven, most of the time, most of the people are complying. For us to sit out there randomly does not, I have I have six or less officers, sometimes we go down as low as three depending on staffing levels. So to to enforce anything, to go out and sit and just randomly do it does not really pay off for us. We need a complaint, we need some data to back it up to say, hey, what time of day? Well, you know, give us some more data so that we can actually get to that point.
How would somebody like say they caught, they're driving, they caught some yahoo on their little scooter going down four oh seven? Is it just a simple email to the police department or they had to fill out a form?
Either email, you can call nine one one, you can make a regular phone call.
Okay, well, they can just email those and say, hey, I saw this and just it's really simple.
That would give us some of the search on and the data backup why we're going to do it. We got multiple add uh uh things under, again, I don't mind bringing in people for special assignments for all of those things if we know there's a problem.
We see them and it's like, I'm sure people don't think to, but if it's just a, hey, I saw this pop in the email, that's much different than having to fill out a form.
We have.
Okay, that's good, no, I didn't know that.
There's this HVPD email attached, it sends it to everybody in the police department they get in, so.
Okay, I didn't know that, I learned something, thank you.
It's in that, if you go into the website, it will show you that one also. Take them any way we get them. We're never going to, I mean, you send us an email, obviously, we're not going to catch them.
No, but at least you can you can kind of, and if anything, identify the probably going to be the same offender.
They're out there and they're even just running, darting between cars, even right here. I mean, like I see them, these kids with no shirts, no shoes, no helmets, no, you know, just ride these things and they're dangerous.
Speaking of that issue though, I was, what is the reception like in the shops and the interaction with vehicles, sidewalks, kids? There's a lot of traffic in there, it's kind of compressed. If you're on one of these scooters and they're riding around, are you getting anything, any feedback from?
Scooters aren't supposed to be out at the shops. It's private property, they can control.
Of speaking specifically from your guys in there, what kind of reaction are you getting from drivers and stuff?
I mean, like, is it cool, like?
Everything, yes, it's all positive.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, the only negative, the only negative comments that we get is, how do these things cost so friggin' much, okay? And I'm just telling you, it's cost doing business, really is. When these things are are made to to travel and hold an officer and last for ten or more years, they are technology that it's what it is. They draw people into them, they allow the officers to to maneuver in a in a much safer way than a typical little scooter, two wheeled scooter that a kid's on.
I just know there's a lot of there's a lot of vehicular traffic, there's a lot of people walking, you put these in there. You know, I'm concerned about officer's safety as well as the public.
No, officers are safe on it, I mean, they really.
But you have no negative, not one back from any of the populace?
I mean, other people don't understand why we went to this level, but scooter, the scooter problem in Highland Village was addressed. I don't know what other cities are dealing with or not, but we were tasked with combating and curtailing some of the behavior that is mentioned here. So absolutely, yeah, thank you. Scooter, thank you.
Truck, it's not scooter, it's a try.
We've still got a bit to go.
Okay, that was an easy one.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, okay, fire department. I told Kevin I would handle this the best I could and let him try and as as needed. He's he's a new guy, so who would have thought I'd be selling the fire?
Wow, can you have those?
Rejig is short time.
Actually, I think, you know, this is actually, and you know, and I've been the one who's questioned things along the way. And fire by nature is just not efficient in the sense of having the twenty four hour coverage and all the various things you have to do and be ready for whatever events that come up. So you have, you know, it's risk management in so many ways of what you provide and which are you willing to spend? And 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 so there's decisions to make. And so this last year, we tried to, we turned out of the box a little bit. We replaced, we had two chiefs, we eliminated one of those positions and we added two regular shift. We were looking at it like a power shift because eighty percent of the fire calls or EMS calls come in from ten to eight to eight or nine to nine, you know, somewhere in that range point. So why don't we staff that other than get noise people and have them here all night and when they're really not going on many calls? So we went that route. And so we were, we hired some just paramedics. But unfortunately, there's so many regulations with the state. And and we were hoping with that to have people there to provide incident command if they have issues that come up and be able to actually, another objective was to provide the the management to where they're not on call all the time. And so we had enough people, we're the fire captains and then their team. If we had six people, I think is what we had to have on staff to be able to do that so they can give them some relief. However, the paramedics don't count because they're not fire trained. So so we're running through these logistics and then, you know, some of the training elements. Basically, it's like, okay, this makes more sense because if you recall, our primary objective was that Flowermount basically told us that, hey, we're doing too many mutual aid calls and we need to look to reduce it. So we all got together, brainstormed and we came up with a number of procedural things and we implemented those. And then we looked at the staffing options and our goal was to be able to actually run two ambulances, have a capability to do that, to address more calls and and we've done that some, but but with leave and and we also provide for some part time positions. But, you know, with leave and trying to maintain that staffing, that's proved to be a challenge to actually do that. So we've actually utilized the brush truck and have it with a little bit more flexibility. We've trained the the firefighters when they go helping a call to, as soon as they think that they're not needed to to make themselves available. So we've done a number of things and our mutual aid calls virtually gone away for for the most part. We have very few, in fact, we're actually making calls for them to help and turn the ledger. So that's been a major, major improvement. And and so that is, that's just great. So with this, yeah, well, this is as far as they put it together, you know.
He requested a trade.
Senior chief.
Senior chief.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so what, yeah, basically these two forty hour a week, actually, it's eighty four hour biweekly, so they have some overtime built into it, but to fill that. And then, but with that, we had those, actually, the still, that's a culture change. And we thought we would be some interest and there was some interest, but I think most of the people really want to be in these positions where to be on shift and to be fully trained. And so the request was basically to transition those to be actually on shift and then add another one, basically add one more per shift. And what that does is also having some hard time to fill gaps. But that allows, I guess, it's seven total per shift. And so even if you have one off, and they try never to schedule more than one off at a time and people get sick and you can't. But that would give opportunity to have the command staff for a weekend, they could handle an incident. Unless it was a major issue, the chiefs are going to be called anyway, but that provides for that. And 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 Kevin can probably better address this, but part of the thing they found when they had the forty hour, they would attach to different, you would be working with different shifts and different people and they were trying to train them. They have a field officer training assigned to them, but they wouldn't see them for a while. They would be working with different people and they really, it's a very teamwork oriented approach. And so they were finding some a little bit of a challenge to having the continuity there. They want to add to that or?
So with that too, just bringing them on board, so they're not certified, they're just paramedics. But to get them certified, it's a lot easier to send someone to paramedics or to fire school, it's sixteen weeks. So we can do that and for me, my also, I teach at NCTC, so I teach EMS, fire and do both. So getting them and getting them trained is going to be really kind of easy to do for us, to bring them up and then to get them as part of that crew so that we're working. And then also the bodies, but the other thing I go back to is to, it's not just mutual aid, it's an opportunity for us to have another ambulance. So when we think about all of our medical emergencies, heart attacks, strokes, it's time. If we're waiting fourteen to sixteen minutes for Flowermount in Lewisville to show up, right, that's huge. When we can have, and what we do is that other, if we go out on a wreck, that brush truck stays at the station, they do not go with. And if they show up unseen and we have another patient, then we call out that ambulance or should somebody need that, then we send that ambulance out. They run as a crew, it's two person. I started out EMS and it was just me all by myself and another EMT, I had a med star. So it's feasible, but it's also there for the benefits of the citizens because the time is what we need to get to the hospital. And that's giving the citizens another benefit that we want them to have. And then it also, we can throw it back to say, okay, we need to, on some of our fires, we just had one recently. But it's nice when Flowermount and them, they send a ladder truck with us, a truck company, those kind of things that we can get from Flowermount so that they're it's available. So and then we can also offer, say, hey, Flowermount, we got towns right over here, we got an ambulance available, they're they're running their tails off, we can give them mutual aid back. So then when we want it to come back, and it's kind of that give and take. So it's very favorable from the two fire departments just from being here in a short time. So I come from Arlington, so I had everything at my at my fingertips, seventeen stations, we just didn't have a lot of ambulance from AMR. But you could deal with that and go around that. So they are going to be still paramedic trained, so that that part there, it's it's a benefit to citizens. And it's actually a benefit to when you think about working as a team that we know what's going on because then we can get in quicker, especially on a fire, and that we can get a quick knockdown. So it it helps out of it.
So, you know, the what we're ending up with, what we've added, was less than what we were told a few years ago of what, how many we would really need in in total. And I think this structure will be enough to get us through a good long time. And with the increased efficiency that we've achieved over the last year and with this personnel, I think we're well set for a good, you know, kind of through build out. There's uncertainty with the remaining build out and we'll evaluate that for what it is when we get there. But I think this positions us real really well. This was some of their scheduling stuff, I'm not sure what it means, so I'll skip over. I think I think this one, it's actually supposed to be tenure rather than ten year, but but it was showing that, I think, the, a lot of our guys are new, you know, when they started. And so this is part of it too, to have more of the training involved and and we need to get some tenure, you know, people to be here and experienced to go forward. And and so looking at the apparatus, you know, basically the minimum is three engine, two and an ambulance, you know, seven, we can run two ambulances and an engine and and that's kind of our goal with that. So this gives us capability and I think it's a good reference. And it's, I know we talked about not wanting to add personnel if we can avoid it as we approach build out. approach build-out, but what we've said is they just need to be heavily scrutinized. I think this meets that right to me, what we need to do for our residents.
So is this, I'm sorry, you're pointing back to that slide, is that the brush truck?
Yeah, no, it's an engine, just, brush trucks are hard to find for a picture, so you don't understand, yeah, but.
An engine, two people.
Yeah, it's still two people, they can just take their gear, they go right on the ambulance.
And we're ready to go.
We don't have a dual axle fire engine.
We'll get better clip art next year.
Three staffing on a, on the engine, is that minimum?
Three men, yes. Yeah, three staffing on the engine is, is your minimum. You can tell there's out there to push NFPA, you can throw numbers all you want, I mean, only ten, we pushed it, and they're getting four-man staffing on an engine, but just coming from that, but looking at what's a benefit to our citizens and what's the, what's the cost, you know, what can we do? We can, we've been, fire department's been running with that. And would it be great? Oh, no, I'm not going to tell you no, it would be awesome, but if we add that additional to two over here in the brush truck, we can conglomerate now and bring all those people on scene, and now with those medics, they're going to be trained as firefighters, so we'll have, let's say someone's all for six, and we only have six, but at least we'll have six instead of only having three people show up and we're waiting because we still have the two-in-and-two-out rule. There's lots of controversy about that and everything, but it's still a rule, it's still a law, and we'll still go in there if there's somebody that we need to go in and say that we confirm that, we just were broken away, we just have to fill out, and it goes with TCFP, but do it all the time if it need be, so, but it's still.
This is taking the two that we have, the two part-time paramedics?
Yes.
Training them to be fire.
They're full-time, I mean, they're full-time.
A full-time paramedic, but part-time employees, they were part-time at the fire department?
No, they're full-time, these are two full-time medics, they work.
They work a 40, a 40-hour, essentially a 40-hour compared to the 2576s.
Whatever hours, yeah.
Yeah, they don't work 48, 96s like our, the firefighters.
But they will.
But they will now, we'll get them.
That was intended.
The intent is, once they have their Texas Commission Fire Protection, then they will, we can bring them onboard.
And how many of them do we have right now?
Two.
We have two, so you're looking at?
Getting them in.
Another one.
Yeah, then we'll hire, then that person, we can go outside and we're just going to hire firefighter, paramedic. So we're converting the two existing 40-hour scheduled to the other, and then we're adding an additional.
Full-time fire. All right, let me clear.
Okay, that's the, our request, let's send it to the next one.
Okay, in the interest of time, I will try and get through this as quickly as possible. I did want to actually start with a story because it just happened 25 minutes ago. I got a call from a resident on St. Charles Court, St. James Court, sorry, St. James Court, and she was calling because her neighbor's trying to sell her house and her neighbor just found out that she's in the floodplain. And it seems that many of the people on St. James Court do not know that they're in floodplain. Every single property on St. James Court is actually in the floodplain. So I had a lovely conversation with her. We did talk a lot about insurance, we talked about what the city had done before those homes were built to build them to higher standards, and that is things like a minimum of two feet above the base flood elevation, as well, actually, most of those homes are five to seven feet above the base flood elevation, moving those homes out of the flowage easement so that none of those homes are in the flowage easement. So we've gone above and beyond the bare minimum national flood insurance requirements. And I was talking to her, and she said, well, you know, we've looked at insurance, she said, but our insurance quote was $3,000. And I said, yes, ma'am, that's probably not average for what it is for floodplain, just floodplain insurance. And she, and she said, well, we just, we declined that because it was a little too much for us. And I said, I understand that. I said, but just to let you know that we've done a lot of things to reduce the risk to your property, and these are the things that we had done before the homes were even built. And with that, it was a great conversation, she's going to have her neighbor call me and we're going to continue the conversation. But what I wanted to say at the end of the phone call is, we are already doing a lot of things that are above and beyond the bare minimum for requirements. What I'd love to say is, we can get credit for that if we enter in the CRS. And the CRS is what you stick like a community rating system of the National Flood Insurance Program. Similar to the fire insurance rating program, there is a rating program for flood protection, and that, and that results in a 5% discount at each rating level for all the things that we are currently doing. And so I'm.
Well, aren't we already, I mean, everybody who's NFIP is assigned to CRS, we're just not near one?
No, we're not in at all. We, no, we are considered a 10, we're considered a non-participating.
Okay, okay.
Community. So we're in the NFIP, but we are not in the CRS.
Because we pass the flooding, yeah, I'm a floodplain administrator, so yes, okay, I didn't realize we had no CRS.
No, and so, but we've been doing the program, we've just never actually entered the program, and we've not been getting credit for all of the things that we do. And so I am requesting professional services, one-time professional services fee to get us into, to kickstart, to get us into the program. And after talking with the consultants and telling them all the things that we're doing, they think we can actually enter the program at an eight or even a seven. I'm shooting, I'm shooting for a seven. And that would be a 15% discount.
15% discount on what?
On flood insurance premium.
For your residents.
For all residents who want to purchase flood insurance. It's not home insurance premium, but it is flood insurance premium, which would might make it a little more obtainable for those who said, you know, $3,000 is a bit too much, but if we can say, oh, we can give you a, you know, six or $700 discount on that, and that would compound every year, especially if we continue in the program and continue to get better ratings, which of course is my goal.
And then we, they would get a certificate from us showing that we are a part of this and we are rated at that, they would then give it to their homeowner's insurance or the flood, the insurance.
Right, it would become nationally known, so there is a list of communities that participate in the community rating system, and so every time a insurer writes a policy, they'll check to see if we're on the, on the list, and if we're on the list, it tells them every single year, the new list comes out, what the city is and what rating there are. So for example, Flowermount, Lewisville, and Denton are all at an eight, Dallas is at a three, Arlington's at a five, things like that.
All right. Yeah, you could, you could totally get five.
I'm, I'm gunning for it, I'm totally gunning for it.
And fun fact, 25%, only 25% of all flooding happens in flood zones, 75% of most flood damage is outside of regulated.
Thank you.
Do we provide information on our website to residences, like you said, their homes are already for whatever fee, on the process to do an ELOMA?
Okay, so what we provide on our website is, we provide a number of things on our website, which I'm hoping to get points for, to get credit for. We provide whether or not the property is in the floodplain, we provide mapping that shows every copy of ELOMA that we have, which is a letter of map amendment, and an elevation certificate that we have, we actually have scanned copies of those, and those are in the map as well. So when you click the map on my property, you will see a scan that says, that has the PDF of the ELOMA, so everyone, residents can access that without even having to call our office. We also have provided very recently, a fun little map of homes that are below street level, in the case of, yeah, in the case of flooding, there are a large number of homes, I can't give you the number right now because the numbers I pulled were the actual properties, yes, were the actual properties that are in the special flood hazard area, but if you go to the GIS portal, there is a map that shows you the homes that are below street level and how far they are below street level. And there are probably about, what is it, 1,100 or 1,200 homes that are below street level. We have 560, 596 residential properties alone that are considering in the floodplain, and of those, only 60 of those properties have flood insurance. And I think if we provide this discount for them, that that will encourage, and as part of outreach, we will encourage people, say, hey, here's flood insurance and here's a discount that the city is providing for you because of all the work that we're doing, and you're getting credit for that.
And now, just to say note, FEMA does allow homeowners to process their own ELOMAS, and they can use the base flood elevator estimator tool to process them because up until recently, it was a big hurdle, and it involved all these professionals.
A surveyor and you have surveyors and engineers.
And recently, they have now changed it to where homeowners can actually, if they get like contours from DFW maps or all, they, it actually can give, empower our residents to get that ELOMA. What's even cooler is, is when a resident gets an ELOMA, if they've been paying higher flood insurance premiums, they can get a rebate up to two years beforehand.
Nice.
This is great.
So, basically, we are already doing all of these things. What I'd like to, my request is to get a little bit of professional help to get us jumped in, and that it's a one-time cost, and from there, staff will be able to take over the program. They're there to just help us with some of the paperwork, get us organized, to make sure we pass the audit, pass a.
Audit.
Yeah, an audit. And then once we've done that, then staff will continue the program from there, and like I said, gunning, gunning for a lower rate every single year.
What, what professional do you consult with?
Um, yes, I actually got the quote from Verisk, V-E-R-I-S-K, I actually met with them at a floodplain conference, had a really great conversation with them. They actually helped provide some of the claim information, they provided all that information for us, that we had 21 flood claims since 2011, 18.5 million dollars of insurance is in force and insurance has paid out $200,000 in flood claims. I do also know that we have several properties that have filed flood claims but did not have flood insurance. Don't know the exact number on that because that, we get this through, through the federal side, and I don't have that unprocessed claim information, but I do know that there were several anecdotally.
When, when disasters hit, if you have flood insurance, you get in the front of the line for your, for, yeah, if you have a flood insurance policy and that's involved on your property, you move to the front of the line when it goes through all your processing to get you stabilized after, after an emergency.
And at a seven or eight, actually at a seven, we're looking on the average about 400, $408 a year savings. And like I said, with every year, if we get a higher number, that savings increases. The other cool thing is recently, is the discount will apply to any flood insurance policy, whether or not you are in the floodplain. So all those homes that are outside the floodplain to get that flood insurance, that will be even a lower rate for them.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you for nerding out.
Thank you.
Are we going to have time to do, Scott?
Some of these can go pretty quickly, I think.
Just have.
Constant theme talk.
We've seen for five years.
Yeah, exactly.
John, right, you've seen some of these for a couple of years. However, there are resident requests that keep coming back, so this year, I promise, it's going to be last year to see this. All I'm looking for is consensus to add it to the next bond issue as a, as a trail project. It is a enhanced crosswalk. Your Cedar, Houndland Village Road, Doubletree Ranch Park, it's an enhanced sidewalk crosswalk to Doubletree Ranch Park, much like the four that we already have along Houndland Village Road, Willow Creek Estates, that's Island Shores Boulevard in Brazos, the new signal. Enhanced crosswalk at the Clearwater South and the Municipal Service Center, and an enhanced crosswalk at Oak Street, and into the Lions Club Park. So if I, if I get consensus, you'll never see it again.
And how close is that to Copper's Branch? The, because there's a crosswalk at Copper's Branch.
There is a crosswalk at Copper's Branch.
Is that the yellow?
Here's Edgewater, so it's, it's just right on.
That white line on there.
Maybe 50, 50 feet.
Scott, how much is the, the warning system normally run? I know we have a couple of them, we just got a new one.
Uh, they're about 26 grand right now.
And if you don't get approval on that, you'll worry back next year, is that what you're trying?
No, just have the resident come in again. Um, left turn lane improvements, this is the third or fourth time for this one. This one is, is nothing new. FM 2499 Phase Four expansion, when they built it, the residents came forward at that time, there was, sorry, there was an existing turn lane here, they had it formed up and ready to pour, and then the residents in Castlewood, the residents in Island Shores came in and requested that we take that out. At Polisacks, Castlewood and Northwood, of course, that was a big no because we had a, it in subdivision. Way over 300 homes in each. I don't know what happened, attrition or whatever, residents have since moved, and residents, the new residents have come in and asked for this left-hand turn lane, southbound 2499, left turn onto Northwood. So we've costed it out. If we did it in text op, would prove it today if we tended to do it. However, Phase Four is going to have an expansion one of these days. Traffic counts for the expansion have to be in the 45 to 50,000 a day range, right now they're in, it's in the 20, mid twenties. So I don't know when Phase Four will expand, but someday it will expand to a three-lane divided.
What's the cost here?
It's too late to buy it, I'm sorry.
What's the cost here? Like, who's going to help us pay for this?
Well, in, if 2499 expands, it's going to be a county project.
It's like 10 years down the road.
I would dump it on them.
I know, but if you're asking for it now.
I'm looking for consensus.
Who wants to wait for 10 years?
Do we want to, we want to attempt to construct it now?
Because I remember this discussion, I think it was about the time that I first got on council, and I remember them not wanting that because it would become a cut-through on road, but what's the visibility on 2499, even the left-hand turn? That hill is right there.
Which direction?
So if northbound, I mean, you're, northbound people are coming over that hill, and then you've got the, you're wanting to do a left turn lane from the southbound lane, what, what's the visibility?
That's further back than you think it is.
It is?
Yeah, so I believe this section is 45 mile an hour posted now. I don't remember the exact number on, or speed limit, it's 45 table. You know, like a 30, 35 mile an hour road, your site distance is in the 200 feet range.
But that was in the original design? So if that was in the original design, it would have met text dot standards for site visibility.
Yes.
So, so it's, it already had been analyzed, it's just they didn't get built, so, and either you, you build it, which I don't know what the wrecks and all going on there, but if it's already been designed and all, it shouldn't be, I mean, your engineering should be a cakewalk, or you're waiting, I'm, I guarantee you 10-plus years.
I don't know if text out will accept.
No, no, they're going to have to, no, they're going to have to look at it, I'm just saying, they already know what, I mean, it's not coming from a ground.
There'll be no study with it now.
Yeah.
My other question, I would love to know how many people make that left turn right now on a weekly basis?
There's no left turn sign.
People, people do it.
Do they, do they back up?
There's a no-left turn sign. It's a suggestion.
It's regulatory suggestion.
To be in the middle, but there are quite a number of cars that do, despite, despite the no-turn lane, they're turning onto Northwood.
I'd say, since it was in the design, obviously, it was looked forward to, and that should mitigate concerns with site visibility, hills and slopes and all, is, obviously, it was engineered.
It's a matter of spending the money.
Yeah, that's, it's a money issue, but from that, I mean, there's not a light there.
Yeah, it's no above your head. Minimum decent lanes for like 400 feet. 400 feet?
Really? 180 plus, yeah, 180.
At that speed limit?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would like to know the incident reports and the crashes and what's happened there. Does it justify it?
How many?
I think you're getting.
How many people have you contacted, you, I mean, I haven't been contacted about it, so.
Four have contacted me.
I've talked to one, at least 45, that was the person.
But is one person, the next thing we have to do is give them a, a light there. We're getting it down. We're getting down.
The municipal complex, it was a lawsuit, I forget how many years ago now, it's been many years. In that lawsuit, it was, there's a lot of structural issues in the lawsuit. Mitigation that we, that we did, as an outcome of that lawsuit, was installing an elaborate drainage system around City Hall, attempt to stop it from, from moving. We stopped most of the movement, however, it does appear that it's, it's starting to move again, hence, the assessment that we did this year for all four buildings. The architects did bring in engineering to take a look at everything, and over on the Police Department Administration offices, that side appears to still be moving. So, they are recommending getting a structural engineer in to study what's exactly happening, and provide a project to stabilize area, that section of the building, provide a CIP cost for that. Asking for 70 grand to get a structural engineer firm-going, study that section of the building. Seeing some heads.
Yeah. I'm in the wrong business, I need to be a structural engineer.
It's just more money after this.
Yeah, they're gonna, that's, that's nothing, that's pennies, but that's a fair, that's a fair cost, that's a fair price, but that's pennies compared to what you're gonna have to do.
In the depositions in the lawsuit, I've read some of it, and it was recommending tear down that section, rebuild it.
Oh, maybe you can call our former pitcher from the Rangers if you can.
Okay, what, what else is on your list?
The Municipal Service Center, 948, as it's well-known, we're asking for an emergency generator. In the original days of Municipal Service Center, which was at one time, you know, it was City Hall, it was Fire Department, it was Police Department, it was everything, it did have an emergency generator on that site. And so, when we rebuilt the site, just for Public Works Fleet and Parks and Rec, at that time, due to cost constraints in the project, we removed the generator, and then in 2015, flood that came through, we lost power for a couple of days up there, and then Yuri, we lost power for one day before we restored. But, we're still asking for a generator, that is our main fuel island, and that's our, our SCADA system is up there, Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition for the Water and Wastewater System is located up there. So, when we lose power, we gotta scramble to bring in portable generators to run those, those two items. A stationary generator would really help out. It's not cheap, there would be some, the main cost is, is running conduit from the Public Works Building to the Fleet Facility, or the Fuel Island.
Can't just call generator, can't think of someone?
What everybody wants to look forward to. We are asking to hire a consultant to start looking at our, some code ordinances. Now, I'm not gonna be here forever, no planning. My community development coordinator is, you know, not gonna be here forever, everybody's getting longevity, I've got 28 years here, Autumn has over 20, and if you go over to her area and you ask her a PD ordinance question, she has a stack of PDs that she has to go through to try to, you know, this PD will answer this question, but it points you into this one, points you to this one. What we're asking is, we would like to hire a consultant and get all of our PDs conformed into one document. We leave, which we eventually will, when a new person comes in, they're going to be lost.
They're not filed, or...
It's filed, they're filed, yeah, yeah.
They're not scanned in?
They're scanned in, they're filed, they're in the city secretaries.
Yeah, it's just sound particularly like, like the shops, there, there's been amendment after amendment after amendment, and it's so difficult to refer back and go to this one, it's...
This one points you to this one, this one points you to that one, and just following a rabbit trail.
So, what would this do? Untangle the rabbit, I mean, that's the nature of ordinances, they just push it off on another ordinance, so...
You take all those PD ordinances and make one document.
For $100,000?
Well, that's not everything.
Okay.
But what?
Also, looking at the subdivision ordinance and possibly the zoning ordinance for some reviews. Our current international building code is 2015, along with our fire code, and we would like to bring it up to 2021. It needs to be done. All of our adjacent cities have adopted 2021 HBC and fire code, and the 2024 codes are about to be released, they're in review now. Recommend you going to 24 anytime soon, because there's gonna be a lot of energy items in the, in the 24 code, not gonna be favorable.
So, Zach, when you review and adopt, do you mean like to, you know, we're gonna adopt all sections, and then these are our exceptions that are, that are applicable to Highland Villages, like what the other cities do?
Correct.
Like...
We generally adopt as-is for the building codes. Fire code, they go through and they cross out, add what they like, what they don't like. They want four wheels on their fire trucks instead of two wheels. Stuff like that. So, it'd be a combination of conforming our PD ordinances, looking at reorganizing the zoning ordinance, review for any changes, we're not suggesting anything, but we would bring it forward in some workshops to review and have a discussion. We do have some interpretation issues and some definition issues, which make it difficult for our code enforcement folks and the prosecutors to get on the same sheet of music and actually prosecute a case. And our subdivision ordinance, Councilwoman Hurst...
That's something, you know.
As for application process and, and our fee sheet update, so, that's kind of a place holder, I don't know if it's low, if that's high.
Hey, would you, what, what kind of firm is yours? What, what type of consulting, like...
We're probably getting with our, with Kevin and them, and he's, he's got one firm that does that, and they do it. I don't know what their staff availability is.
Yeah, yeah, we'll probably, we need to take you in there, because I'm sure the council chambers are full. Wait, don't run here.
I hear people down there.
They're, they're sounding like they're around. I think we do, because I think we do need to do, and then pick it up after, yeah, in the late work sessions.
Always better when you're here.
Yeah.
It'll be very quickly.
No, 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 no.
Everybody good with that? We've already done number three, we can move it to the council chambers now. We started on that. All right. We'll get here in 23.
Good evening and welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is July the 9th. We are running a little behind, and I must apologize for that. It is 7:45. And we are going to get started with, well, first, let me just say all council members are present. We're going to get started with the prayer and then the pledges led by Councilmember Rhonda Hurst.
All right. I'd like to invite my boys up for the prayer. I'd like everyone to join us. My boys, the young one Crosby and my son Carson, I'd like us to join us. I think it's important as a community if you want to, to pray together. And so I'd like to lead the Lord's prayer. So in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. In the kingdom, in the power, and in the glory of yours now and forever. Amen. Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Thank you. All right, now, it's ready for the pledge.
Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Okay, thanks, boys. Thank you, Mayor Charlotte.
No, thank you. Thank you, boys and gentlemen, for coming and getting that with us. Okay. I'll turn the page and put my glasses back on. So now we're going to do mayor and council reports on items of community interest. Does anyone have anything? Oh, okay. Well, then, we're going to move on to city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens, do you have anything?
Mayor and council, just a couple of items. First, I want to mention that our third-party contractors are making excellent progress picking up the storm debris throughout the city with nearly all subdivisions complete. Today, they focus on Lake Visca and Clearwater subdivisions. The remainder of this week, they will collect any storm debris piles through the city that may have been missed. After this week, we should be back to normal, and any debris picked up at that point would be with Republic and should be the standard four-foot lengths bailed and in leaf bags. I do want to thank Scott and his crew for managing everything. This has been a big effort, but finally made some great progress. The traffic signal replacement project here at Brazos Highland Shores and Highland Village Road is operational. Staff will be doing a final walkthrough this week. Once the project is released, Lewisville, who manages that for us, will come out and adjust the timing of the light. So I know there's been some questions about the timing, some very long wait times, so it will be programmed once we accept that project, so that should happen very soon. Also, just as a reminder, the city secretary's office is still taking applications for volunteers interested in serving on boards and commissions. Apply by July 30th, and you can visit highlandvillage.org/volunteers for more information. And that's all I have, and we do have a village report as well.
What's up, Highland Village? I'm Officer Dave.
And I'm Officer Ben, and we want to talk to you about micromobility safety tips.
Let's get rolling. First, what is a micromobility device? It can include electric or non-electric versions of scooters, bikes, hoverboards, or one-wheels. Hey, look at this guy.
What is he doing?
Officer Foskey, why are you riding without your helmet?
Oh, it messed my hair up.
Aw, man. Here, safety first. Did you know that in Highland Village, kids under 18 have to wear a helmet with the chin strap strapped up?
But if you ask me, all ages should, because this is your brain without a helmet.
That's bad. All right, let's talk about crosswalks.
First, when you come up to a crosswalk, stop and make sure the roadway is clear. Then, walk your device across the street.
So while you're on the trails, remember to be courteous and give an audible warning while passing someone.
And be sure not to use cell phones and headphones while riding. So let's be safe out there, guys. Anything else, Officer Dave?
Just remember, only one person per device.
Happy trails out there.
Okay. Thank you. So, Ms. Poor, if you'll just state your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Linda Poor. I live at 106 Monday House Lane, which is just right across the fence from here. I could have walked, but I didn't. But I appreciate y'all giving me a moment to speak. I would like to bring to the attention of the city council and the mayor an experience I have had over the last month in dealing with a skunk. On the morning of June 8th, I spotted a skunk walking down my driveway from behind my shed and moving toward the street. I had smelled a skunk a few nights before. We live right beside the walking trail and the soccer field right over here. I spotted the skunk again around 10:00 a.m. Now, this skunk is coming out during the day. This concerned me because I had always heard that they are nocturnal and should not be out during daylight hours. June 11th, the skunk has moved farther into the neighborhood and is in the neighbors' front yards at this point. I popped into City Hall, hoping to talk with the animal control officer, and I was informed the officer was in another building. The lady I talked to expressed concern that the animal was out during daylight hours and that I should walk across the lobby, pick up the telephone, and talk to dispatch and let them know they could get the animal control officer for me. I told them I believed the animal to come from the walking trail and under my fence, and I was concerned about the walkers, the pets, and the children that play back there, as well as my grandchildren and their pets. The only response I got was, "We do not do skunks." So, well, what about the safety of the children on the walking trails? You need to hire a private pest control. Well, I was shocked. I was just shocked, number one, the way I was treated; number two, the total lack of concern. And so I asked dispatch, "Well, what does our animal control do?" And I'm going to give you the exact response I got. Not skunks. So that was the end of my conversation that day. I then submitted a question through your villager that I got in my water bill, and Lori Mullins did respond. And my question was, "What does the animal control officer do regarding skunks in the neighborhoods?" She gave me Wes Fides's phone number, and at that point, I also contacted Councilwoman Nelson and Councilwoman, woman Rhonda, and he told me he would check on it and get back with me. And I called Wes twice with no answer and no way to leave a message. The mailbox has not been set up, so there's no way he can call me back. There was no information. I sent out an email to all my neighbors to inform them that we have this skunk that's appearing during the daytime hours. The skunk also walked right up to me while I was in my backyard watering my plants. I didn't consider that normal behavior of a wild animal, so I carefully laid down my hose and went inside the house. My neighbor, Murdis, said that she had had a skunk several months before, I believe it was in September, was given the same information that she needed to hire a private pest control, and she did. It costs $350 for them to bring out a trap, and when the skunk is caught, it's another $150 for them to pick up the animal. That is $500 a skunk, and I am here to tell you, as a senior citizen on a fixed income, that is cost prohibitive to me. I would like to read to you what is on your website concerning live traps. Trap permits are required for all humane live traps, whether privately owned or borrowed from animal services. The trap permits are valid for 90 days. The trap permit fees are: A borrowed city trap, $100, and includes trap services. Privately owned traps, no permit fee but $50 per service, with a max of $100 within 90 days. The trap must have a permit label affixed. Trapping is not allowed on weekends or holidays. Traps cannot be set when the temperatures are below 35 or 100 degrees Fahrenheit. The permit holder is required to check the trap daily and report any captured animal. Skunks, in accordance with the city ordinance, the use of city-owned humane traps to trap skunks is prohibited. Any person who catches a skunk with a privately owned humane trap must release the skunk or contact a private company to have the skunk removed within 24 hours. Then it goes on to talk about feral cats. As you can see, this policy gives me no options on what I can do with a skunk. So today, just today, I have spoken with the Flower Mound Animal Control to find out what their policy is. They have a trap with instructions they offer their residents. An officer will pick up the animal when it is caught. They ask you not to trap on Sundays because they only have one officer. I spoke with Denton. I have a friend that lives in Denton, and she has had several skunks, and Denton comes out and gets them for her, removes them from her property. They confirmed that, yes, they would send out an officer, but your call could drop in priority if they get a higher priority call, and therefore, the animal would be gone before they got there. That is their city policy. I also spoke with a Denton County game warden to ask him what my options are. He had a lot of suggestions on how to discourage the skunk from coming into my yard, which I'm willing to do anything to help. The first thing he said was to treat my yard for grubs, because that's what the skunk is coming in for. I spoke with a Highland Village police officer when he was at my residence, helping with an injured hawk. We have lots of wildlife in this area. He himself was an animal, a certified animal control officer, so I said, "You are the man I need to talk to today." He said, "They do not do skunks. They will come out for snakes, possums, raccoons, armadillos, but not skunks." Basically, they do not want to be sprayed. They do not have a suit to put on to keep them from being sprayed, and private pest control companies do. So I asked him, "Well, what would happen to me, a 70-year-old woman, if I got sprayed?" "Oh, it won't hurt you." A skunk is a wild animal and known to carry rabies. In fact, there's a 20% rate of skunks that carry rabies. They are nocturnal, but if seen during the day, they could be rabid, not necessarily, but they could. The presence of rabid skunks poses a public health concern, as humans and pets can be exposed to the rabies virus. Skunks are one of the primary carriers of rabies virus in North America, making it essential to be aware of the risk associated with skunk encounters. They can also carry other diseases, such as distemper and leptospirosis. I'm not exactly sure what that is. So if you have a skunk on your property, they suggest you remove the feces of the skunk before you let your dogs out. Not only do they suggest you remove it, you get your water hose, you rinse it, and you pour bleach on it. I am asking our city council tonight to please look into how our animal control handles skunks. I believe it to be prudent to handle this problem as soon as possible before it becomes a big problem, and especially on public areas. I'm calling you and letting you know. I've tried everything to block all the access from the walking trail into my property, but it's not easy. I have over 200 feet of fence along that walking trail, and I'm letting you know there is a skunk. There's a skunk that comes out during the day that approaches people. Isn't the safety of our citizens, our children, and our pets worth it? It is my understanding that the Highland Village has three certified animal control officers. Do we need to equip them to be able to perform this service? And how expensive could that be, a suit to equip them? My simple question still remains. What does Highland Village Animal Control do about a wild animal that is acting out of the norm? And by the way, this wild animal is a skunk, and who is going to protect me? We just saw a video that safety should be our first concern, so I'd like to leave that with the council. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I know after public comments, we don't respond, but I would ask if you could leave your number with the city secretary. Okay, thank you very much.
And neighbors, thanks for coming out. It's good to see y'all. Okay, we're going to do the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has an option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. On the consent agenda, we have consider approval in minutes. The regular city council meeting held on June 25th, 2024, receive budget reports for period ending May 31st, 2024. Council, was anybody like to add or take off anything on consent? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion that we approve consent agenda items 11 and 12 as read.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Fiorenza, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed, same sign? Carry 7-0. We're going to do the action agenda. We did not, number 13, we did not meet in closed session, so we'll do number 14. Consider Resolution 2024-3128, Appointing Council Representative to Fill a Vacancy for an Unexpired Term on the Highland Village Community Development Corporation 4B. Okay, council, I know we, I think we talked about this in, got a presentation in early. We don't need Ms. Miller to do it again, do we? Mr. Feaster?
No, but in talking to Councilmember Cox during early session, I know he's traveling that day, and to avoid him having to rush back to a meeting with the consent to council, I would volunteer to attend the meeting in July, and then, obviously, when it gets reappointed in November, do what it will. So I guess, bad form to nominate myself, but it is something we did talk about, so...
I'll second that.
I'm not going to make the motion, though.
He's not going to make the motion for him, but, okay, well, then, I'll make the motion that we appoint...
You've got to remember my name.
Councilmember Feaster to this unexpired term on the Highland Village Community Development Corp. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kixmiller? Councilman Kixmiller? Okay, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I thought you were fixing to say something, Brian. Okay, good. So it passed unanimously? Thank you. Moving right along. Okay, wow. We are now to status reports on current projects and discussion on future agenda items. So, council, does anybody, Mr. Fiorenza?
Yes, I would like to ask the city manager to request Republic Services come in and give us an update and give us a discussion on their progress for the last year and see where we're going, have a discussion item with them. Thank you.
Can I add to that?
For a future agenda item?
Your item. Can I add to it? Can we add, talk about brown trash cans?
Okay, yeah.
Remember the brown, add the brown trash can discussion?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that, so that's good that you, that you did. Okay, anybody else?
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to ask the city to chase down our sales tax revenue from streaming services that are going to Flower Mound and find out how we get our money back.
Wow. Okay, and then I guess we need to talk about skunks.
Yep.
We'll, we need to have that.
One thing. I saw earlier, or maybe last week, that the double, or the splash pad for Doubletree went down. Has that been mitigated and corrected? I know it was back open, but are we, are we looking at any more future maintenance issues with shutdown, because it's a, it's a hot topic with the community?
Good one.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I'm just with Charlotte. I think we do need to look into, there's got to be some kind of compromise for wild animals in our city.
If we're going to talk trash, we're going to talk skunks, so...
I mean, it's all smelly.
All smelly. Right. All right. Then we are going to pick up with late work session, I think, the rest of the presentations? Are there...
Are we going back?
Mm-mm. Stayed here.
Ken? I don't know who's...
Can we see this on our screen? Is it, how do you, oh, how did you do that?
Minimize it first.
Minimize this?
Go to your internet. That's what she was doing here.
He did. Yeah.
I don't know if it's that one.
He told me we don't talk.
Thanks a lot.
Well, I guess we'll continue on, and finishing up the supplementals would be your Parks and Recreation. Brian's going to come, sing his song.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
Make sure I know how to use the... I'd like to cover some of the Parks Recreation supplemental requests, and start with parks. On the first one, we are requesting some contract services for cleaning our park restrooms.
Wait, well...
My other browser?
Sorry, I can't see them.
We didn't realize we were going to be down here, so we had meetings on there.
Okay, thank you. My 29-year-old eyes.
No, thanks.
Can't see it.
Have one.
I'll look at yours while mine loads.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah, we're looking into contract services for cleaning our park restrooms for the months of April through September. This is something that our staff is currently doing on overtime on weekends, and they have a lot of other duties on the weekends as well. They're cleaning in between rent... They're cleaning in between rentals in our pavilions. They're doing athletic field prep, litter pickup in the parks. And this is something that would give them some relief on some really busy weekends and also reduce some overtime. Our current labor hours and costs for what we're doing in-house is around $12,000. The contract services for the same work would only be $9,516. We have a quote for that amount now. So this would actually save us a little money and again, give some of our staff relief on a weekend overtime. Next item is the Unity Park restroom. It's at the front of Unity Park near the Kids Castle Playground and the Flex Field in the front area. We're having some issues with the water flow and the pressure in that restroom. The service line to that building, we found is not, it's not large enough. And the fixtures don't, don't work properly. We don't have enough water for them to flush properly and operate the way they should. So we are asking to replace that service line. It would be 275 feet of one and a half inch poly water line. And the cost for that would be around $20,000. I can show you. Well, next slide, we have a picture of that location where the water line would, would run through the park. Yes, sir.
I assume that line would be trenched.
Yeah. I'm sorry, would be bored.
Bored?
Yeah.
So that, that's surprised the bore, there would no be, no landscape redo or no new curving or give me sidewalks?
No, they, they're going to bore under the concrete, the sidewalks too, so. Okay, next item, our pickleball courts at Unity Park. We received many requests here for, for updates and also things that help improve the playability of the courts. I put some pictures in here of the chain link fencing. You can see that it's a little old, a little worn. There's places where it's bowed and bending and coming apart. So we would like to replace the chain link fabric. But also a request from our players there. You can see the top photo, there's, the fence on the side is only four feet high and there's no wind screens. So some of the feedback we're getting from the pickleball players is that the wind really affects the play. It's a, it's a lightweight plastic ball and it really can affect the playability. So they're asking us to, to raise the height of those fences to eight feet like the rest of the facility and also put wind screens on the sides, just like we have on the, on the ends. So this project would include, consist of raising the sideline fences to a height of eight feet. It will require some new entry gates and also replacement of the chain link fabric and new wind screens. The benefits of this would be to enhance the look of the facility, but also the user experience by reducing the effects of the wind. And the cost, yes, sir.
No, please finish.
No, just the, the cost we've, we've received quotes so far, the cost would be around the $65,000 range.
Are there, are there safety concerns that we would be creating by heightening the fence and adding wind screens, thus enclosing those courts? I know they're lit at night, I know, but the three-foot tall fence that's not screened makes visibility really easy into those areas.
It does, but we would, we would be using wind screens that you could see through. They wouldn't, I know we had an issue at the Sellmire Tennis Courts with a previous project, as Councilman Hurst knows.
That's a huge concern of mine because when you have children in the world we live in, it is not safe.
So we've learned that those wind screens need to be a thinner material that you can see through. So you would still have the visibility. Yes.
Is there a breakout? So obviously, this is a convo, but is there a breakout of if we just wanted to do the wind screens and not the new fencing, what would the cost difference be in that? Because I could see, I could see a world where we, we might want to do the wind screens, but adding just a new, an extra four feet to make it an eight-foot fence might not be in the thing. It might be a little bit half, but not all of it.
Are you, are you saying leave the fences at four feet?
I was just saying, what's the cost difference between just doing the wind screens compared to doing the wind screens and the new fencing? What would the difference between just doing the fencing compared to the wind screens be?
Well, we, we haven't looked into that yet because really to, to make the wind screens work, we would need the higher fence. If we, if the fence is only four feet, it still wouldn't, wouldn't block the wind enough, I don't think, to achieve what they're trying to, to get there with, with the wind.
Guess the question, why wasn't this considered when we put the money forth last year to redo and make those all pickleball courts? Because we spent a lot of money on it already.
Well, the, the previous project was only to resurface the courts for pickleball. The fencing issue and the wind issue came up from the, the people playing there. They, they've given us that feedback now that they're playing there a lot. And at the time, we didn't realize that was a need.
Okay.
And I've played pickleball one time on those courts and the wind was blowing. It's virtually impossible. It really, I mean, it's, yeah, it's hard to do that.
Yeah, the ball is, you know, it's a plastic.
A wiffle ball.
Basically, so it does affect it, yes, yeah.
Okay.
I only played once.
My concern is screening. I mean, that's a, that's a huge problem.
We would definitely make sure that the, the wind screens were, you could see through, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Next item, we, we do have a few items of equipment we brought for tonight. And one is this, on the picture on the right, it's our Toro Sand Pro that they use for dragging the baseball fields. This piece of equipment is about 10 years old and it's, it's getting pretty worn out. We need to replace it. What we're looking at is the machine on the left, which is a, a much different machine. It's something that can do a lot more. The previous machine is, is only able to drag the fields. The new machine can do everything in one. It can drag the fields, it can aerate, it can, it has a spreader so you can spread fertilizer. It can do a lot of the field maintenance tasks that the other machine can't do. Can show you on the next slide. Yeah, I think I listed them all. Just the larger machine, because it can do everything, it's just, it's more efficient. It's going to provide better, better quality and improve the speed that our staff can get the fields done.
How do we, how do we currently do the aeration and the other things?
We have a, we have a tractor and an attachment to the back of the tractor. Or some, some areas, we do contract that service out too.
So if we had this, then we wouldn't have to do the contracting out, correct?
Not, not at that facility, no. Yeah.
Is it limited to just one place? I mean.
It is, it would be more assigned to the baseball fields at Unity Park. That's what it would be used for.
I'd be interested to know the savings of not having to contract that workout and the life, the life, the length of life of the machine. And there's a word and I can't think of it, but how much, how long is the life cycle for that machine?
Okay. The, the current machine we, that we're replacing, it's about 10 years old and that's generally the lifespan of most of this type of equipment.
How frequently is it getting used?
During, during the baseball season, it would be used daily.
Okay.
Two seasons, spring and fall?
Spring and fall, yes.
Okay.
Our next piece of equipment, this is a mini excavator. We have one currently that's very much past its useful life. It was actually retired by Public Works at one time and then handed down to us when it was already being retired. So it's something that in the Parks Division, we use, we use a lot. It's a heavily used piece of equipment. We use it for irrigation repair, landscape, construction projects. We've used it for some erosion control projects. But the one we currently have is just no longer reliable. It's, it's breaking down a lot. We've actually also had to rent an excavator recently to do a project at Pilot Knoll. And this one just is at a point, it needs to be replaced.
Does Public Works have one? And is, that looks like a mini, a mini excavator.
They do, they, they retired this one and bought a new, and bought a new one on their replacement schedule. And then we took.
Are they the same size? You're replacing same size?
Mm-hmm, yes.
It looks like a baby excavator.
Those things are handy though. I mean, they're like, you can, it's like the duct tape of little things to do dirt work with.
Yeah, we use them a lot, or it a lot, yes.
I'm going to drop it.
I think Scott, do you need a new one?
It's not in his, he's already done his budget.
Oh, he can hand it down.
It wasn't in his budget, we've already seen the supplemental.
Scott's on a replacement list, but because ours was a hand-me-down, it was never put on the replacement list.
You've made good use of a hand-me-down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that brings you to my next piece of equipment. It's, this is a robotic mower made by Husqvarna. And it's something that some cities are starting to use. We actually went to a demo in Carrollton where they use these to mow all of their baseball and soccer fields. And what, what they used to do with a four-man crew, they can now do with a one-man crew because they have a robot mower and robot painter for the, the field lines. This is something we are interested in for the dog park. This, we had a demo at our dog park as well. We found that it can handle the, the slopes. We have some pretty steep slopes and close to fences. And when we take our bigger mowers in there, we've actually had, had trouble with, with machines sliding into fences, causing some damage at times. So we're trying to find a better option for the dog park. And looking at our work order system, we found that we spend approximately 160 labor hours each year for two guys to mow the dog park at a cost of around $3,700. The cost of this machine would be just over $7,000. It would pay for itself in a couple of years. And it would release our guys that are doing that mowing tasks to go do some other important tasks that they need to be doing. They still have to mow the rest of the park, they still have to do that ball field maintenance. They still have a lot on their plate. But this is something that you set it up, you put the parameters in place, and it, it goes out of its charger station at night and mows the dog park while nobody's there, so.
How do you prevent theft?
How do you what? I'm sorry.
Prevent theft? I mean, this just seems like, how do you keep it from being stolen?
That's a good question. If it's stolen, it has a tracking device inside of it and it won't operate. If it's removed from its location, it won't operate. And it can be tracked wherever it is, so the police can go find it.
And nobody would lose, the, the man hours replaced would not take away people earning an income that work for our city? Because the last thing we need to do is put people out by robots.
Right, no, we definitely don't want to do that. This, this would be more of, of using new technology to help us to do more with, with the people we have. With a small staff and the work keeps growing and growing, but we don't have additional people coming on. This will help cover some of that load.
Can you go through some of the specifics about the machine itself, reliability, terrain aspects? Reliability on that terrain, because I know it's a sloping hill and has a lot of different.
Yeah, I actually had the, the contractor come out and, and do a demo at the dog park to make sure it could handle the slopes and it, it did great. It, it mowed everywhere we needed it to and had no trouble with the hills at all.
And they, they map it out for that machine? That how they, they set it up?
Yeah, they set it up. It's a reference point that they would attach to a light pole there. And we have an iPad that with GPS technology that would map out the areas you needed to mow. And it just does its thing.
What is the lifespan of one of these?
I've been told by the, I mean, it's pretty new technology, but they're telling me probably 10 years or so.
And do you know what type of factors they built that 10-year period on? Is that a level terrain? What kind of, what kind of, what, what kind of scenario have they tested this 10-year period on? And what can we expect out of a machine on that piece of property?
The, the 10-year period, I don't know what they base that on because again, it's very new technology. But it's very, it's a very simple machine. It has, it doesn't have a lot of parts. It's very easy to, it has parts that are very easy to replace. And the, they have a repair service that's in the area. So part of this would be a, a maintenance plan that we would pay them. I believe it's $350 per year for the maintenance plan where they come out and service the machine. If it's down, they would bring us a demo to use while they're repairing our machine, so.
You know, again, the, the characteristics of that piece of property and the lifespan that they've built this machine on, there could be a cause and effect issue here, right? We, we see based on the numbers you've provided that there's a return within two, two, three, three years max. But if the characteristics of this property will wear that out in five years, you know, we're getting a benefit, but is five years really worth it? Can we get closer to 10 years out of this, given the characteristics of this piece of property?
I believe so. I don't, I don't think the slopes and the, the shape of that property affects this smaller machine as much as it does our larger mowers. It's able to handle the terrain very easily.
Yeah, but you don't have the weight on it, obviously, but.
Right.
There's other characteristics of the machines that drive it too, so. I'd like to get more information if we can on that first.
Okay, sure. And, and this is also something we're looking at. If it does work well, expanding at a later time with more machines, maybe to mow baseball fields, things like that. So this was a smaller machine we wanted to try at the dog park first to see how we like it, basically, yeah.
Of the $7,100, how long, how much is that of battery? And how long does the battery last? Not the equipment, because batteries seem to be the issue.
Well, it has a charger station on site. And what they've told us is it can mow for around six hours before it needs to charge. And the technology allows this machine, if it's not finished with its mow cycle, but it's low on battery, it will go plug in and charge. And when it's charged, it'll come back and start at the exact point where it stopped.
But over time, six and a half hours becomes an hour. What is that break point?
At that point, I guess you would need to replace a battery, yes.
Right, that's right.
Does that maintenance fee, that $350 maintenance fee include?
It probably would not include a new battery, no. Yeah.
My Alice at home does that. She, she vacuums and then she goes and plugs in and comes back and starts again, so.
Yeah, it's very similar to the vacuums, yes.
But that's kind of weird. I'm just thinking mud puddles, do we have mud puddles at the dog park? Does it go around them? Does it go through them?
If it's a mud puddle, it probably would have to be reset. It would probably stop it, yeah.
Yeah.
How does it deal with the yard bombs?
Other hazards in the dog park.
It mows right, from what I understand, it'll mow right through them, but that might leave us a cleanup to do after, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next?
Next. Okay, the next one was for the Recreation Division. They are requesting a, a part-time recreation assistant. This would cover the, the morning hours at the DeVal Center on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday mornings. Their programs and classes have really grown. It's so much busier now than it was just a couple of years ago. And we have some numbers here just to show you the number of visits. 2021, 1,801. 2023, we're over 4,000. So I mean, that's a 50% increase. This is something that the Recreation Staff is asking for, for some relief because of just the heavier use that that center is getting now. It would be a cost of around $9,000 for a person to, to work 600 hours per year. And again, that's three days per week. Those are the busiest days when they have the heaviest traffic.
Wouldn't increased programming, not that parks don't make money, I'm not saying that, but there would be a little bit of offset, wouldn't it be from the increased costs or? Wouldn't increased programming, not that parks don't make money, I'm not saying that, but there would be a little bit of offset, wouldn't it be from the increased costs or revenue from the programming?
A little bit, but it's not 100%.
Not much, no, I wouldn't say 100%, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Yeah. Senior programs are also very low-cost, and that's mostly what we have. Okay? And that's the last one.
There you go. All right.
Any more questions, or?
No, I think just a question for Ken. You know, we're looking at all the requests. At what meeting will we actually burrow down and decide yea and nay?
Well, we're looking for feedback tonight. And certainly, it's over the summer, so probably the second meeting in August, we'll do a review of everything. So if there's questions or concerns, that could be, you know, at the very least addressed there. Because first meeting in September, we have our presented budget for, and for public hearing and all that.
All right. I mean, I see some that, you know, I could say yes right now that I would support, okay? Maybe other council members. I think there's some that would definitely want to weigh and need more discussion than what we have here tonight.
And if you have things, like you mentioned on various things, you'd like a little bit more information, certainly feel free to email me or Paul. And we'll make note of that to make sure we prepare and then be ready to address those and.
So if you're looking for, if you're looking for input tonight.
Oh, I mean, if you readily have some, yeah, that's helpful for us to know either, okay, just take it off the table. Or if you want to pursue with further information, so at least we know where to fully engage you and get you what you need.
Can we get a copy of this so we can do homework?
Sure.
The supplementals?
Uh huh.
So we can look at them? Yeah, I'd like that.
Sure, okay. So, supplementals, you know, in total, as I had mentioned before, is just a little over $1 million. And so that adds a good bit. So that provides for a 10% increase over last year budget in total for that. So the question that would follow is, well, how is this something set us up for the future? You know, we would be looking at a bottom line for this year of actually our fund balance going from 41% from base budget to 35%. You know, still in an excellent position just by itself. And then as we look forward in context of a five-year outlook, you know, it's kind of a repeat of last year where we had four years with decreasing fund balance. You know, our target, if, you know, to remind you, is from 20% to 25% is where we strive to be. You know, we've been above that. But knowing with build-out that we will be challenged to stay there. So we will be reduced just by nature of our expenses increasing and our revenues flattening. Over four years, we will be within our policy range, and then the fifth year potentially dropping below that. So we have time. And this, you know, the five-year, too, this is, you know, just to provide a context of, we've talked about our next debt opportunity in 2027. So say if we follow that, and this would be, Copper's Park has been the main target of that bond issue, I guess. And there was some follow-up streets. There's always street programming needed for bond issues. Just for, just a reference point, we, I show an 8.5 million, roughly half a million dollars a year in debt service. And so you can see the effect of that. When you look at the increase-decrease, you know, that pushes it up to a little over $1 million deficit, which is obviously not sustainable going forward. So over the next five years, we'll have to look to rectify that, one way or another. You know, it's, at some point in time with build-out, there's going to be a need for a tax increase somewhere along the way. It's just unless you're going to severely cut services. In a way, the revenue caps have really kind of set us up on that trajectory. Obviously, we want to avoid that as long as possible. So one thing, just to put in the very back of your mind, if we ever have to do a tax increase, you know, a good time to do that would be associated, like, say this debt issue. It provides some wanted enhancements, but it provides a burden to our budget and it takes away revenue needed for our operations. You know, if council chose at some point in time that they wanted to pair a tax increase with a debt issue, it's at least you have something tangible to attach it to. Because it's extremely difficult to go through that. They've made the process to do a tax increase very hard to do. So I'm not saying that's what we need to do or consider that now, but just in the back of your mind, as a planning tool or a thought down the road, I think we can manage this for a number of years. But we know what's coming. We're in good shape now. I don't think we're doing anything extravagant. Yeah, we have a number of requests, and we could not do some of those or we could do all of those. But down the road, we're going to have to adjust. And let me continue that thought with another context of a request I got. 2017, we increased our over-65 exemption to $75,000 from $50,000 we had previously. At that time, we matched Flower Mountain with their exemption. You know, since then, Flower Mountain's increased theirs. And then legislature some time back has provided an avenue for a tax freeze, very similar to what you, the school district does. School district makes sense because your kids are long grown and you're not paying for your kids being in the school anymore. But for a city, you know, they provide for the same option where basically if you were to implement this freeze, the year that you turn 65, your property tax amount that you pay would forever be a ceiling going forward that you would never pay more than that. So if we were by chance to reduce the tax rate down the road, you would get the benefit of that. But with increased valuation increases and tax increases or anything, it wouldn't affect that going forward. And so that's a pretty drastic, because the provision for that is that it is permanent. Forever's a long time. So once you implement that, you can never go back and revoke it. It's in effect. There is no provision to do otherwise. So taking a look at our neighboring cities, you know, even at the time that we did our exemption, we expressed that it makes more sense for us to do an exemption that we have control of, that we can either increase or decrease as needed going forward and gives us flexibility where the tax freeze provides none. So to give you a perspective of what that entails, I guess, and I'm going to take you through some things, and there's going to be some numbers, and I apologize for that. But to try to put this in perspective, and you know, it's kind of a difficult topic because there's going to be a constituency that will jump up and down and say, yes, we should do this. But there are trade-offs, and some big-time trade-offs, and something that is a policy decision that will take a lot of thought and consideration. If you look at our tax base now, residential tax base is 2.7 billion, which is roughly right about 90% of our full taxable value. So we're heavily, heavily dependent on our residential property valuation. If you look at the over-65 value on the books as part of that 2.7, if you take away the exemption that we currently have at $75,000, that would represent 729 million or 27%. So we got well over a quarter of our tax base that is with our properties designated with, you know, people that qualify for the over-65 exemption or disabled. So if you look at these cities in comparison, okay, a big consideration of that. If you look at Highland Village, 65% of our revenue base is from property tax. Well, looking at Louisville with tax freeze, they have 37%. That's a huge difference, and that's a very lessened impact for them to be able to do that. The outlier is Corinth, where they're at 52%. And, but they had a voter initiative that prompted that and voted that in. And I think, personally, I think that's going to be a major challenge for them going forward. Huge challenge. But if you look at some of the other comparable cities, like Flower Mountain doesn't have a tax freeze. Capel, Murphy is probably the most comparable city far as demographics, tax base size to us. You know, they have a large part of their tax base, 58%. Capel is interesting, has 63% of that. And then, you know, when we were just talking about that, Paul kind of pointed out that they have all that warehouse district, and they have a huge investment there in commercial that will take up a big share of that. So that makes more sense. So that kind of puts us as an outlier to that with our heavily dependent property tax revenue that we have. And so that makes that even more difficult for us. So if you take, you know, just to give you perspective, on our last year's tax roll, 117 million was for the exemption for 1,600 homes. So looking at our average assessed value, $522,000. If you take our current tax rate, you know, the average, you know, on average, our resident would pay $2,600 property tax. Well, if you look at our senior resident with the $75,000 exemption, excuse me, it would be $2,245, which is a $376 difference. So, you know, they would get a little break. But for the city, that provides $591,000 of lost revenue. If you were to increase that to $100,000, it would basically give them a $500 tax break. But to the city, it would be $811,000 revenue loss, which, in essence, that would increase going forward. When you saw our deficit before that we were looking at a million a year, we would add $220,000 to that forevermore going forward. Assuming that we stay at relative same percentage of our senior population, which we don't know if that will continue or lessen. Or I think for the foreseeable future, it's not going to reduce probably. I think over time, it'll, it's hard to say. But that's where we're at right now, what we know. So, okay, let's look at our demographics. And this is an absolute, this is our best guess and some metrics that I gathered. So I wouldn't say this is absolute comprehensive information, but I think it does provide a pretty good picture of, if you look at the blue, this is from our comp study with the income demographic information for the city, for entire population. You know, by strata, by income, 75 to 100, 150, 200, over 200. If you look at the next, I guess, the gold color, that is from our recent survey that we did. 75 of the 127 respondents to that, that said they were over 65, provided their income information for the survey. So charting that out with the information they give us, you see it pretty closely tracks what the other is. You know, certainly not quite as much on the very high end, but in the middle, actually exceeding what our average, you know, citywide ranges. And then on the far right, would, in the gray color, would be Esri information that we gathered for our city based on, you know, the same criteria, which pretty well tracks, you know, the senior population as well. I mean, that represents the senior folks. So that kind of substantiates the survey results of being pretty well on target. So years ago, you would say exemptions for, made sense for seniors because, you know, limited income, you know, it's going to be, you know, more of a fixed, and so there would be a discrepancy, I guess, in salary in recent years. And I think we all see the trends have changed there in that. But it is complicated in fact. That's not going to be absolutely across the board. We have a number of our residents who are going to be in the lower end of that that struggle. They bought their home 20, 25 years ago when it was, you know, $70,000 or $80,000, and now it's worth half a million to $600,000. And their taxes have gone up, and we deal with them on their utility accounts. And they struggle to do that. So there certainly, we have a component, I think it's a fairly small number, but we do have a component of our senior folks that are in that category. But if you look in total, I think you can not consider that there has to be, along with, you know, there's certainly a compassion issue with that, but there's also a fairness issue with that. Because our senior folks, you know, if you look at the studies done, they use not less, but actually probably more city services than the other demographic groups. So if we did the freeze, we would be looking at a quarter of our tax base that we've leveled off and we're not going to get any increase from with increasing costs going forward for a group that uses more services, or at least as much as everybody else. And so that provides a challenge. So back when we did the exemption for $75,000 back in 2017, that was a primary reason we argued that this would not be a good option for us. To give you a tangible example, and again, this is just, there's some challenges to that because there's some unknowns, but you tried to fill them in as best I could. I showed you earlier the property tax, where we have the existing value, we have the new growth, and then we have an increase in assessed value every year, and there's a compounding effect of that. So if you take, like, say we were to implement this in FY '25, we have $614 million of over-65 property values currently. Even though this is not based on property value, it's based on the property tax amount paid. I think it serves the same purpose because we're not likely to have any tax increases over the next period of time. And so their taxes aren't going to go down. So in essence, they would be capped at whatever, you know, based on this assessed value amount. So the total from the year before, we extract the $614 million, and that's constant going through. And so then you have the remainder of everybody else. And so your increases each year of valuation would be applied to that lower number. So over time, basically, it becomes a compounding issue where, when you look at the increases of 3.8, 3.3, 3.1, translates to 3.2, 3.0, 2.5. And then on the bottom, you can see the difference of 100,000 to 200,000 to 300,000, and, you know, up to, you know, nearing 600,000 a year. I don't know where that stops. Because at some point in time, over-65 folks aren't going to live forever. They're, it's, eventually, they're going to move or, or.
Move on or move.
Move on. And then somebody will buy their home and it resets. But in the meantime, other people are going to turn 65. And so I think this provides a fairly reasoned representation of the effect of that because there is going to be a constant amount, a high constant amount, you know, over a quarter of our properties that are fixed. And so that million-dollar deficit now translates to a million and a half going forward. So if we were to consider this, you just have to know straight up, year five, six, seven, we're going to have significant cutbacks to pay for that. And there's just no way around that.
That assumes that it stays at 27%. If our population mix changes and it goes to 40%.
It's even worse.
It's worse.
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's even, I thought we were at 20% over 65. Didn't realize 27%.
No, it was, you know, I did a look at this, it was probably 10, 15 years ago, and it was like 12%. And so a few years ago, I re-looked at it, and appraisal district, you know, gave me numbers back that it was like 22%. And I questioned that, said, there's no way it could be that. And sure enough, it was. And it's just, it was a dramatic change. And it's not just Highland Village. There's lots of cities that have experienced that. It's just a trend kind of right now as well, baby boomers aging. I mean, and it's going to be here with us for a while. So this is just a kind of a five-year look. We, I think you could easily go out 10 years and realize there's not going to be a lessening of this by any means. So with that, you know, we said in 2017 that we would review periodically what we would do with that. Well, here's a periodic review. And so any change we make to it will come with ramifications. And so, you know, it's not what, we're not going to say, well, we should never do anything. I mean, it's just, it's a policy decision and for you all to consider, but we will want to do the best we can to provide you a picture of what is the effect of decisions made.
Again, can you remind me how much of our sales tax will be apportioned to DCTA this year?
Well, it's half percent.
Right. But do you know the total that we're expecting this year?
Oh, it's a million.
Million and a half.
I thought last year we paid 2 million, almost, 1.9 is what the thing said. And the legislator goes in session in January.
So to give you a look at the five-year, you know, put this in context, you know, if we were to increase to 100,000 exemption, you know, we would be looking at, you know, a big thing is the increase-decrease, you know, that increases by 200,000 a year. So we follow the same trend, we just go farther.
I have a question. So is there a way, not that, I mean, and this is hypothetical, say right now it's 75 and if you hit 65 years old, you're, can they be locked in? And then if it changes, any new people coming up, they deal with those consequences? So like it's based on grandfathering because then you don't, so the people who already have achieved, they're gotten to, if you've lessened the exemption, they're not affected to pay more, right? But the people coming into it would pay more. Am I making any sense? Were your grandfather the ones that have already hit 65? So like the first wave, we've had 75,000, but maybe if we reduce it to 50,000, everybody who's already got the 75 holds, it's just all the new people coming in. Am I making any sense?
Well, if you, whatever we change it to applies to everybody.
Okay, that was my thing. I didn't know if you could.
Yeah, it's not something we can.
Okay, that was my question.
Is, whatever you implement, you meet qualifications, that's what it is. The only restriction they really put is a minimum amount if you do it and that's pretty low. Like on the Corinth thing, if, the previous exemption amount they had was 20,000. So they really didn't keep up to pace with everybody else and it's like they kind of set themselves up probably for that. Not to say that, you know, certainly, you know, I'm approaching that, I'm right on the cusp of that demographic and it's nice to have, but, you know, the school taxes make sense and that's the bulk of our property taxes. And so I, you know, I'm, personally, I'm satisfied with that. But, you know, it's something we get asked, I know the mayor's been asked about it, I get questions from people, but, you know, I'll take the time to explain that, well, here's the bigger picture of this. And, you know, if we were less property tax dependent, we would have more flexibility, but that would just, you know, really cripple us. You know, if you look at the freeze, you know, we go down to 12% in year five. So that's tough.
I do want to say, I know we all say that older people need more services, but we have people that have lived here for 30-plus years and they weren't using the services beginning. So I think it's a little unfair because they weren't.
Well, if you look at EMS calls.
Oh, I know, no, they use more, but they were also contributing to using less.
No doubt, no doubt.
So they probably balance out.
No doubt. I mean, and it's, and some people go their whole life and hardly use any and other people use a lot. So it's, you know, and we, we're a community, we're, we all chip in together to provide just like, well, I don't use parks, I shouldn't have to pay for them. Well, you know, crime is less because we have parks and people are engaged and so there's a bigger picture to all of it and we're all in the same boat and we collectively look at it. But this is, this is a tough, I mean.
This is eye-opening, you know, because it's easy to say, I want to freeze my taxes or I want to raise the exemption or, you know, nobody wants to pay taxes. I'm not 65 yet, but Mr. Wilcox is. And, you know, it sounds good, but then when you see this, and you know what.
There's trade-offs. And, you know, people want the trails and they want the nice things, they want the service and they want the personal contact with our community policing models and all that. And we have a higher service model along with that.
Couldn't you, granted, there is additional, there's funding we could possibly get, but couldn't you, because not, a lot of the seniors can afford it and they're all, and we have those that aren't, what about looking at when these changes and not freezing, having a compassionate grant program to help out our seniors to get over those homes so they can stay in their homes? Because it's going to be a very small portion. Is that even something the city would look into, kind of a compromise?
And, you know, we've, you know, we've kind of talked through all this and say, well, what if we had like a income base? And well, number one, legislature doesn't afford us that option, but then that becomes a real difficult thing to manage.
No, not like that, more like.
And I think we all look at managing our finances because I'm looking to downsize and I'm looking, you know, in retirement to do a lower expenditure level and that will, you know, that typically being in a place like Highland Village or Capel or, or an area that appreciates a lot and has a higher tax base, it's not the place to retire. And if you do, you have to prepare for that and that's part of it. And I'm not saying that to be insensitive by any means. I mean, it's, there's a responsibility too. And so we have to look at compassion versus responsibility and fairness. And it's, I mean, again, it's a policy decision and it's hard. And, but you need to look at it wide-eyed and fully informed.
Well, and I hear all the time that nobody, everybody loves Highland Village, they don't want Highland Village to change. We've got great programs and we offer, we're a great community, obviously. So I think that this, a freeze could possibly, would change that. I mean, it's obvious, there's the numbers. And I don't want Highland Village to change, but we're on a fixed income, on his fixed income. So I totally understand that. So I am very sensitive to this whole tax thing. And the state of Texas fixed that a few years ago, remember? How they told everybody that they were putting a cap on and everybody thought it was a cap on what they were going to pay, but it wasn't. So.
There was a lot of misinformation with that.
There was a lot of misinformation with that. So unfortunately, this would just be, this is, this is eye-opening tonight.
So again, that's provided for, just for your awareness and whatever questions or if you think about it and there's more you want, you know, certainly let us know. We, you know, our objective is to empower you and provide you with everything you need to, for consideration because you deal with our residents and answer their questions and to be fully informed and capable.
And the thing is, we are residents. That's what everybody needs to know and we all pay taxes like everybody does. I would prefer that the home values go down if we were going to freeze. If they're going to freeze mine, I want home values to go down first and they will. They really will, I assure you, but I don't know when. So I don't have a crystal ball.
No, yeah.
I'd just like to ask, go back to one other thing on the supplementals. If there was a way that we could all get a list of it and then ask and each of us feed back to you, just a way to circle those that we would support.
What a great idea.
Then you could come back at the next meeting and say, these are the ones that have a four to three or a five to seven or five to two support. That'd be one way to parse it down without getting into a two-hour discussion on each and every item. And it would still be public and it would still be open.
Yeah, that'd be a cool spreadsheet for financial that I.
Well, but I think it's, it's good to have feedback, but I think it's good to discuss as a group.
Well, no, I think we discuss as a group, but, you know, it's the old acid test. Let's go through the ones right up front. There's going to be some, like, you know, hiring the part-time for the senior center. I think if we looked at it right now, you'd probably get seven yeses. Okay. But I think there's some that are going to be seven no's. Okay. So let's spend time on those that are meaningful.
Sure.
And not, not time on things that are ancillary.
Sure.
That's, that's all I'm looking at.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, council?
So only thing, just in our schedule, next meeting, we got special revenue funds and we'll be looking at the Corleese Parks along with that. Utility fund in August and, you know, we got challenges this year and a number of things. So I'm not going to be the bearer of good news all summer long, unfortunately. But, but like, we've been blessed and we have opportunities. And so certainly things that we can meet. But, and then again, the last meeting in August, that we can tie anything up that remains hanging out there and then we go into September and, you know, get the budget approved for another year.
It's a quick calendar.
It comes quick.
All right, anybody, council? Anybody else have anything? All right, well then, nobody has, we're adjourned at 8:56.